We're going to call the public hearing to order. Nancy, go ahead, give us a little rundown and we'll go from there.
Okay, quick rundown. I own Camp Elasol since 2011. The adjacent property came up for sale. I bought it. I built a storage building on that property. And I've since been involved in the local art community and become an artist myself. And discovered that there is a lot of interest in having a facility so that artists can teach workshops because a lot of times that's going to make their money. So I built this workshop building and I came to the planning board with all the details and then you guys came out for a site visit. And what other details would you like?
Well, I mean, we could open it up to anybody who might have a question that's here. You know, a lot of the questions I think that we had had, we asked along the way. You know, we were hoping tonight that we would have people who might be interested and come in and want to know some things that we did or didn't offer the answers to. And that's it as far as I'm concerned. I guess one of the questions that I might have is, I know you had said that there's plenty of restroom facilities for the people that are there. I guess I was asking about the age of the septic in my mind as I was, you know, kind of getting straight with this.
I wouldn't say.
And do you know off the top of your head how long ago that was?
There are two facilities. There's one bathroom in the house that's on the property with the workshop that came with that property. I do not know the age of that septic. I do know the age of the one at the camp house, which has three bathrooms, so three toilets, three sinks. And it was 2011 and it was built such that it could take 14 people at a time. Is that right, Ken? It's very large septic.
And the camp house is more of a that house, kind of like you'd see a camp with stalls and stuff. It's not like a normal house that.
Yeah. But the septic design was to hold that building at capacity.
Correct.
Yep.
And that was six years now.
And that would easily swallow you for starving artists.
If they wanted to stay, yes. But it's also the facility to use for the work.
Sorry. Late and distracted.
That's all right, that's all right. Are we then set as far as you're concerned, Ken, on the septic? As far as the, okay. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? All right. Once we get into, I guess I'm going to do is close the public hearing. And at this point, we'll open up our actual meeting. And if you haven't had a chance to read the minutes, please do that. And then we will vote on those. And then what we're going to do, Nancy, is come back to this once we take care of this preliminary stuff thing though. We should be able to take care of this, I would suspect, before you leave tonight.
All right. So I'm all set, Nancy?
Yes, Carla.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
For thing.
I didn't reprint the 20th again, but on last week's minutes, I actually put in italics what is on the 20th. So you can see some secrets there. I forgot.
So when it's 7:03, you open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then the applicants left.
That's right. Are we done?
Well, I think she was going to the sidewalk. You just didn't bring the permit with you.
Right.
It's okay.
I don't think she even heard you say we could go down before she left.
I'll make a motion. We need to subdue this written.
Second?
Second.
And comments, concerns. Tom, you said you were interested in, just edit on page one, under all business number one. Just to clear it up a little bit, Towns ordinance that a landowner may avoid a conditional experiment review in the case where a forester is retained to manage all areas of the cut shoreline if applicable, shoreline zone, RP, and rural.
So remove the outside, the shoreline zone? Does remove that?
I think it's going to have to be a little more wordy to convey what. He wants to get across the fact that you can use the forester, I think.
It's for the whole site.
The entire site, not just the shoreline. I think he's trying to make that clear if I'm not mistaken.
I wonder if we could put that as an addendum because that isn't what he said. So I, I, he said his understanding is, so. Could we put that as a?
What did he say? Was that Tom said or Steve?
Steve looks like general.
I don't want, I don't mind if you recapture what he's, it's up to you, however you want to.
So there's difference there. This is what he was saying.
It isn't what he said.
He may not be as clear as Tom on that ordinance. But specifically, when it was implemented was the forester wasn't, had to be involved for the whole lot, just not the little bit of shoreline or RP.
Number two would be Towns definition of resource protection districts under 10 acres outside of the shoreline zone. I think that's a place for that. But you don't think he said that? So what if we, in parentheses after each of those two, added what our interpretation of the actual ordinance? How will that work? Anybody else?
As an addendum?
Well, it would be. It would be in a sense an addendum. It would just be along the way, right there.
In the minutes for this meeting, the discussion, the discussion of the minutes, we could make that note that.
You good with that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. That's fine with me. Whatever makes it more, you know, makes it clear to everybody. If that works, then that's fine.
Okay. So could you tell me exactly what you want that to say?
I can't. Tom's going to.
I think it would have to say, you know, something about going back to all business under Steve blah, blah, one, two, and three, the board's interpretation is.
Or clarification.
Or clarification is. So there's a reference to why we're not.
And where it's going to lead back to.
Yes, and where it's going to lead back to. So can Tom state what the clarification is? I don't want to. Is it just number four in the footnote?
Our four, yeah.
Okay.
Let me don't check that. Did we ever get, not to change the subject, did we ever get a page?
We haven't, but I wrote this out.
Yeah, you could just cite our board.
That states that.
The lady was John.
Okay.
Page 18. And that covers about one. And how about two? Just one. Two needs, Towns definition of resource protection district as being. Less than 10 acres. Outside of the shoreline zone. Three, I think is okay. Any other additions or corrections? All fair? All right, good. How about Gavin, I guess the fact that we have approved this, does that infer to you that the 20th modification or changes are okay in your mind?
Yeah, I'm happy with that. And we, now we have for a total of 800 square feet.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be nice to add that word removed at the end of that, but I think it's fine like that.
Okay. All right. So then this approval, please hear that. All right, perfect.
Do you have to go down?
All business. Let's come back to Camp Elasol and see if we can perhaps take care of this. Do you have anything to think now that we're back in our actual meeting? Comments, questions? Or am I looking for a motion?
Do you have to do this?
I was going to do that. Do I do that first? Help me out.
If there wasn't any conversation, I guess.
We go for a motion, then discussion.
Next.
If they're ready to do the standards, can we do that before a motion?
Are we good? Questions, any comments about what Nancy had to say or what she remember from the site visit or questions that we've talked about earlier in the month? Do you have any other questions, Ken, beside that septic wall that I stole from you? No? All right, let's go through the conditional use standards and see if we can fill that in. I think everybody's got one in your folder. "The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, in or other wildlife habitat." No. Okay.
Is that a double negative so that you said? I always worry about that. She said to me, yes, it will not have, yes, it will not have.
Will not have an adverse?
Or no, it will not have.
I thought Tom would give it an NA before you read the whole sentence.
"The use will not have an adverse impact." Negative impact.
And I can't on this form, I can't change the verbiage to make it clearer because it comes from the ordinance.
Well, we could easily put, can we?
Well, perhaps the noise could potentially disturb things. So if we just said, yes, it will not have an adverse impact, that would be.
NA. No birds, no wildlife?
Yeah, it seems pretty much fine to go with yes or NA or no, anyone.
But we have to, we have to go back and look at earlier ones that we've done without.
I've always watched it really closely. And there's only a couple that have that double negative.
All right. So what do we decide then? Let me, let me go back to that. What do we want? Which way you want to go?
Let's go with NA.
The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. NA. Really? They're not anywhere near water over there? Yeah, we are. Send that back out. Use will conserve shore cover. But they're not trampling on the ordinance. Okay. "The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan."
Changes.
That should be yes. "Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standards in this ordinance." Sure, if I can, you have to talk about access.
Right. The limited amount of people there isn't going to affect the traffic risk from that. It's a main town freeway, so.
All right, so good, yes. "The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations." NA. "Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made." That should be yes.
Did she say she was just going to use the dump? Yeah, transportation pretty much.
Yeah, because she was talking about everything being water-based.
Well, it depends on the type of art form being enacted there, but yeah.
They don't take them, they portraits with them when they leave. It goes into the dump.
Well, I mean, maybe like sculptor, you're going to have like, you know, whatever they took off.
Sure is. That's nothing they took away.
Whether it's wood or stone.
Yeah, that might be something, but I think that's fine.
We're at G.
So the G S?
Yes. "Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made." NA.
Yeah, she said it wasn't going to be.
"Stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed." NA. "Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made." She did the, she controlled the soil with the, let me think, the active.
Did that. Technically, it's really not even on her property, but it was the main path that goes across the two others. It's really not out of this. The existing building is existing, existing packing area is there, so really there's no expansion of the use.
So we're still at NA? Okay. "There is adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes." Yes. That should be okay, yes.
So why wouldn't I, if she'd done the design, why wouldn't it be yes?
Which one? Which one I?
I.
Not everybody controls soil.
Yes, it's an NA.
You're right, I think. There's no expansion. Well, like the driveway area, the parting area is for the large gravel area, and she hasn't really done anything with that. But she not changing anything.
She's not changing anything.
So it doesn't change. Yeah, because I think if she changed that, she might have to do something with it substantially.
So it's NA.
Yeah. So we're at K. "The provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the developments such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like." I think the natural landscaping is adequate to achieve that.
I wish she would put it on two sides, kind of.
Yeah.
Now a lot of neighbors.
She is an expert, right? That's fine.
So I think a yes there?
Yes.
We're at L. "All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met." Yes. Archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected. That's an NA. Okay, that all being said, is there a motion now? I will re-approve the CUP for Nancy Malone representing Camp Elasol. Seconds?
Second.
Comments?
I add into it her description, which calls it seasonal use. No more than 25 students, two instructors.
The conditions of the hours, eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. So seasonal use, so we're not talking winter times. Normally, that's how we would interpret that. Yeah, well, you think. I think the building's not heated anyway.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. No, it's not heated.
Anything else added in there?
And maybe no toxic art supplies, just no oil-based paints.
I mean, she didn't seem to have a problem with not using oil-based paints when we discussed it at the site visit. I don't know if that means that she'd be willing to, I mean, do we need to put something like that about no oil-based paints?
That's maybe a little too restrictive.
Yeah, it's very restrictive.
It's more about how you deal with the disposable containers and stuff.
She's agreeing with proper disposal.
Only asked about it, that was her response, that there wasn't going to be any.
I think we got a lot of off-the-cuff responses, truly.
Right. Well, yeah, I think it goes back to that adequate provision for hazardous material.
Where are we then? What do you think? Yes or no on?
You say you had some making stained glass there and they've got lead solder. I mean, there are some possibilities with that, but I guess.
They can get into ceramics and stuff like that.
Well, yeah, there's metals in the place.
Legal disposal of all waste.
I think it's covered.
Yeah, so put that in as a condition, legal exposure.
Yeah, if an artist is using something considered hazardous, then she has to provide adequate disposal methods.
Yeah, it's not hazardous stuff you want to dispose of properly.
Yeah.
Right. Next, I was going to say next to the tire and the refrigerator out there.
All right, so you got that added in there, that condition? You think that's okay? Anything else? Yes. Sorry about that.
Wasn't there, in case of like overnight guests or restroom facilities, did that get discussed again?
I thought I remember that she said that there were plenty of bathroom facilities for everyone.
In the house and in the camp?
Well, I don't think anybody's sleeping in the, in the art studio, right?
No, she said in, there was one in the house and there's the three in the, in the camp, in Camp Elasol.
This is the bathhouse on Camp Elasol.
In Elasol, the same.
Is that the one that would have the three?
Yeah.
That picture?
So it's nine by 18 and it's male and female stalls. This is just the oldest sketch of it.
All right, then, are we okay then? Everybody want to write something specific into it?
It's, it's less than 200 feet away. It's 100 and something feet to get over to them or the house, the house is probably going to be about the same. So it'd be her customers that if they don't like to walk there, they won't come back. But otherwise, the facility, it's handicap accessible, it's, it's good on that area there. Yeah, I'm fine with the facilities, sanitary facilities here.
Anything else that we want to add to the conditional use?
That's all I have.
All right. All right, then, all in favor? All opposed, good? All in, yeah? All right, so we have that, we're taking care of your table. Should I do it?
His shield's getting all over him.
All right. Okay, back to the agenda. Looks like we are on.
That's just on it because of all business.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the wedding plan. Okay. All right, and then move back into 7th Street, which would be the one down by the trading post that some of you had a chance to see. I have been lucky enough to be able to see it after that site visit. And Ken, do you have anything to add about that particular site?
Just the glitz here. And we can go over it with him. I think this is the more complicated of the four ones we have, just because there is room to move back, but it's kind of just a unique site.
Is that nice to put?
Unique?
Well, they're all unique because somebody has to move back a lot and some people don't move back a day.
Because my concern always has been, since I first became aware of the little mousom over there, that how close everything was to, to the water. Concerned with whatever, it's something that caught my attention, I guess that's what I should say. Any photos?
That's the waterfront side. This side here is 41 feet from the retaining wall back. This side, no, that's 36 and this is 41 over here.
It's actually, that corner is closer. You can't see it on this picture, but if you go 30 feet down the retaining wall, there's actually an access.
Oh, there's the water close to it?
Right on. And that's the closest point. Maybe take some pictures today if you guys would like to. Unfortunately, they're only on my phone because I just, just did it, but.
I don't have any.
Do have some, but I think they're just.
Just what you have.
Yeah.
What did you say the other side was? Left side as you're standing by the water looking out there?
So right now, you're looking facing the water, so on this left-hand side.
Is that 30-foot part of that?
Retaining wall comes over and then cuts back in. Probably eight feet wide between my house and my neighbor's property. It looks like they could use it as something as a boat launch because it's almost the straight line for my neighbor's driveway. So that would kind of be my.
The more unique of this was, the more this moves back, and if he moves back the same parallel he is now, it stuffs into this retaining wall here of the neighbor's. So by, as it moves back, if it rotates, he then looks more at his neighbor's boat stocks and things like that. The other issue he has is the uniqueness of the lot is there's a dug well inside the house. Do you know how deep that is?
24 feet.
Yeah, so it's a deep dug well. And this is steep all the way down until right about there. So when you look at it, it appears to be 10, 15 feet. You can move back and still have a little flat room, but I think it's just, it'd be too much to move it back that far. I think my suggestion would be seven feet back and maintain five feet from the retaining wall. And if he goes to dig and there's an issue, we'd just, just come back and relook at it.
So based on the markers that you put out today, I remeasured, or whenever you put the markers out, I remeasured and to that high-water mark, moving it back seven feet makes between six inches and a foot difference.
On the front, because of the rotation.
Because of the, so.
Because of that inlet that we're talking about.
Because of the inlet.
On this side here?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this side here would gain quite a bit.
It would gain the seven-ish feet.
And then the rotation.
Are we talking clockwise or counterclockwise in that rotation?
Well, that's the problem is, is when you rotate it, if you rotate, depending on which corner you rotate.
Soon as you rotate it, you move in that corner closer, right?
Right.
So that's, and that's part of the issue.
I thought we were kind of talking about going diagonal to keep that five-foot, three-inch side setback and move back seven and not so much turn the house.
Well, and that's the problem is, is when you move that five feet over, because for every foot you come back, you have to move a foot over, basically. So when you do that, that keeps pushing you closer and closer to that little inlet. And that becomes the issue.
So in reality, we could be doing that and end up being almost closer.
Yes. Like you said, it's a six-inch difference to move it to seven feet and then I'm excavating an additional 300 square feet of soil. So based on the markers that you put up today, I remeasured, or whenever you put the markers out, um, I remeasured and to that high-water mark, moving it back seven feet makes between six inches and a foot difference.
On the front, because of the rotation?
Because of the, so
Because of that inlet that we're talking about?
Exactly.
Because of the inlet.
On this side here?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this side here would gain quite a bit.
It would gain the seven-ish feet.
And then the rotation.
Are we talking clockwise or counterclockwise in that rotation?
Well, that, that's the problem is, is when you rotate it, if you rotate, depending on which corner you rotate
Soon as you rotate it, you move in that corner closer, right?
Right, right.
So that's, and that's part of the issue.
I thought we were kind of talking about going diagonal to keep that five-foot-three-inch set, side setback and move back seven, and not so much turn the house.
Well, and, and that's the problem is, is when you move that five feet over, because for every foot you come back, you have to move a foot over basically.
Mm-hmm.
So when you do that, that keeps pushing you closer and closer to that little inlet. And that becomes the, the issue.
So in reality, we could be doing that and end up being almost closer?
Yes, like you said, it's a, it's a six-inch difference to move it to seven feet, and then I'm excavating an additional three hundred square feet of soil, which just to me makes, you know, deserting more soil and creates more of an opportunity for erosion and all of that.
Are you gonna, oh, you want to use the existing foundation of the, existing location?
To me, that may
Foundation is definitely replaced.
The foundation is getting replaced. Um, but to me
Oh, that's incorrect in the, um,
No, replace, replace an existing.
Oh, annex, oh, replace annexes.
An existing.
Oh, as opposed to one opposed or something?
Yeah.
Alright, gotcha.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Last ten seconds. And if the well wasn't, you know of it too, it would make more options available, but you're kind of limited on how much you can move it because you can't put the wall through the well either.
Well, I don't think the well really fact is into much of it because there's no other room to move back. You can come back a little bit, you gotta shift over. You can't come back a lot because the, uh, the driveway just comes down and ends, so you're not moving back very much that way. It's that rotation, and I mean, we had talked about the really only way to do that is lay that out on a grid, cut it out and then try moving it, but you've kind of done that too as far as when that rotates forwards. That's, it's, it's the gain right there.
That's right. But your general impermeable surface overall is going to be further from the lake. We're just talking about the closest point, we're not talking about the whole structure. But we can't be any closer.
My general impermeable is gonna go down actually just by doing this project, because right now, all the way around it is a four-foot wall, a four-foot patio. Patio, blockways. And I would remove that and put new rock into it so that it didn't
Yeah.
Didn't run in as part of that project.
Do you notice water running off from, going right in the lake from, from the site right now?
Well, there's three retaining walls there, so nothing can go directly into the lake.
Mm-hmm.
It's, that's controlled, but, um, you know, you can kind of see what
Sure, it goes down on the left-hand side sometimes, right to the, the back of us. Yeah, you can see that.
Does it come rushing down the driveway?
It doesn't appear to really come down the driveway all that much, and the, the driveway, um, at the bottom kind of slopes a little bit back up to the house. So it seems like, you know, it comes back and it kind of goes out to the, um, area on the, on my right, I guess I'd say over towards the shed, and that's all along there. So it kind of controls the you know, there, there's no paths directly to, um, you know, but it's coming to that side, it would then be disturbing more soil and doing more stuff. You know, obviously it will put down you know, the barriers and the erosion control and all of that, it just
Ken, has the YCCC helped you on this one?
I just began the owner in the office.
Okay.
So you know, probably ninety-five percent of the, the frontage there is all retaining walls, it's just that one section that is that one, that's my neighbor's, that's an, an area, and then if you go this way, my neighbor has a beach, that's his property.
Was there some plan or thinking or game to, um, mitigate the runoff that may be part of that bulk there issue? Maybe we'll have to agree on that, yes, but
And, and that would be, the hard part is, is it's very little bit of it is, is mine, it's mostly, like I said, down to my neighbor's.
So, so the actual inlet is on the property line?
The inlet is probably half and half. And both of us have full retaining walls, so you know, that's the beach that I'm
Mm-hmm.
And So you can, above where your cursor just was, uh, at the end of the canoe.
Is that the property center there?
Yes.
Yeah, and then it goes retaining wall all from back there?
Yeah.
Interesting. So my idea of trying, wanting to push everything back, it won't work.
Unique.
How about the septic? Pretty new one.
The septic is gonna be done as part of this, um, they did
Are you gonna replace it? Here isn't now, right there where the cursor is?
Um, that's the, the field, the, um, so above where the shadow is, you can only see it different in the color of the grass, uh, right there is above where the tank is roughly. Um, and then it goes out into a trench.
And, uh, and the new location's gonna be similar or?
New, new location is going to be
Up on the road for the field and the tanks down.
Yeah. But we'll eliminate that issue with the well and the
Pump it.
If you guys, I do have a septic plan, if you guys want to see it, oh, sorry. Send it to, thank you. Ken as well.
So what do you think? You have to listen to all this, Ken? What's your recommendation?
I think if there's six inches to gain, the board has in the past always got what they could, this is unique at best, so
One, it seems like perhaps the, the bulk of the building will be further back, it's just that the closest point will be
Cause of rotation.
Yeah, yeah, it's a weird one.
One side, so the bigger number gets bigger, but the smaller number doesn't increase very much.
And, but we have to obviously be careful that it doesn't creep the other way, because it, you know, it keeps up. And the foundation's in good shape right now, or?
No, that's what we're doing.
So you said it's congloment? Yeah. Yeah, that's what I said, replace, you know, usually when they replace the foundation, we haven't, because they're digging everything up anyway, I'm a bit, uh
So basically, it's a gain of six inches.
On one corner.
On one corner.
And what the Alphons keeps saying though is, is probably important to keep in mind too, that the potential is to gain still that six or seven feet on a on more than just the corner. Like the drip lines will be all pushed back more than the six inches.
The, um, the roof lines actually come off to each side.
You're gonna, are you gonna change, you're not changing the rotation of the building, it's still gonna be like this?
Yeah, it will still
So it's still?
Yeah. Um, the, the big thing is, is if I'm moving it over, I'm not touching where the patio is.
Mm-hmm.
So it would just mean doing more excavation
Right.
To do the, the patio and remove that as well.
And the, um, roofs, uh, are you gonna have a gambrel roof when that's finished?
Uh, it'll be sloped a little bit more than that, um, I can't, I showed a couple of you the, the, um, existing owner replaced the, the roof that left rock out there, and it's all
Yeah.
Dead mice and rotten
Right.
Two-by-eights and
Oh, this was the one that had no, uh, no, um
Shaving underneath the
Nothing underneath the, right, the
Yes, dumps right down, a little flat roof on both sides.
So all of that will be rectified and, you know, there'll be proper gutters and proper mitigation of any, any rain, um.
Well, anybody else? Or is there a potential motion out there that we can at least start with and see where that takes us? Are we in any kind of agreement as to being interested in moving it, or are we leaning toward keeping it in place? Throw that out there for discussion.
And the sides of that too, why do you hope with the sides?
Stays exactly the same five
Still five, five feet, three inches.
Cause if you make the side better, then you're driving this in closer.
Mm-hmm.
So if we made the waterfront better, you could, the best you could do is maintain the five-foot-three inches and still would be pushing this closer for not much of a gain here, but on this side would be seven feet.
So can you, can you give me a hint as to how far that inlet comes in? Over there, I don't see it actually on the, uh, on the picture I get on this one.
I had some blur, I'm wondering if it can have dark. I tried picking it up.
You can kind of see the end of the wall, um, just above where the seventy-five is. So if you don't mind, I can
Yeah, we'll
Kind of sort of pinpoint to kind of what it does. You can kind of see a little difference of color here, so basically the end of the wall comes in here and here, so this is the actual high-water mark right in there. Yeah, right down over here.
And so your suggestion is the, the front corner of that house is thirty feet away from the closest point of that inlet?
Yeah, so if I measure from this corner to here
Yeah.
That was thirty-four and a half feet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if I measure from the new proposed
Spot.
Spot, it's thirty-five feet, um, if I did that, took a little video, just so you guys could see what it was, cause you know, I was curious of
Yeah.
And, and obviously it's that's rough math of, you know, me with a pencil on the corner, holding the tape measure right now and then holding where the thirty-three feet comes down from the, the other one and squaring out the building and doing all of that.
A part and parcel of this, you're gonna remove that, um, concrete apron around the house?
Yes.
And you'll be putting in
My plan was to, you know, even when I, you know, my house with no water around, there's crushed stone around it. It loves the water to slowly go in, go into the soil, prevents the splash, you know, you don't end up with rock off. So, you know, my plan was, you know, what I did at my house is two feet out, it's all crushed rock and then, you know, obviously finish it back to
And, and the grating from the septic from the top and all that is all going to, um
Sort of all of the
Because as you said, I went down there, it goes, and then up a little.
Yeah. So that, that will all be, you know, maintained, you know, I'm not looking to change the slope at all, you know, the, the plan is, is to be able to use that for parking, so, you know, it's gonna be, you know
So right up from the road is still gonna have that?
Yes, and, and everything that's, you know, that's grass today will go back to grass, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not looking to make more, um, you know, as I well, Ken, I've got two young kids, I want them to be able to enjoy the lake, you know, when we bought it, we did a little thing with them that, you know, this is also your camp. And, you know, we want them to be able to, to enjoy it and
Little playground.
Well, it, well, not even so much the player, but down the road for the, you know, their kids, hopefully they can come back and enjoy awesome, and, and that's you know, I grew up on a lake as a kid and, you know, have fond memories, want them to have the same.
Quite a few trees have to come down to relocate the septic, or?
Septic's gonna have some up at the top of the hill, it'll come out.
Are they, are they two hundred and fifty foot?
Oh, no, I think so.
So they're gonna get relocated as close to the shore again?
The, the septic plan, the septic, uh, field is going where an existing parking spot is on the top, so that
But when they dig the line for your
And so you'll up the side of the driveway, so
Yeah.
There shouldn't be, you know, there's some dead trees that I would take down just because they're one hundred percent dead pine trees.
Right.
But there'll be no, you know, my plan is not to take any additional trees down, um, as part of this project.
Alright. Would you go up?
Two fifty.
Go up to two fifty?
Way up to the, the road edge. And that's why I want to go up the side of the driveway is to not have to do any of the
Yeah. Replacing, how about the replanting?
Well, no, minimize the impact, I, you know, those are all beautiful trees.
Yeah.
It will be all of, you know, all of my lifetime before they'll ever go back to that, so if I don't have to touch them and don't have to kill them, I would rather not.
Well, where are we at?
I have to send them a piece of some
This guy's obviously not tomorrow.
Those dumbbells deliver?
I think it's the toughest one we've seen in a while.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is a place to move it, but are we gaining anything at the end of the day? We are gaining over here, but really not there.
I mean, if you gain the soil, it was such, you have to be careful about it going the other way.
Yeah, yeah, cause originally I was thinking ten feet off the side setback, get it off this retaining wall that's under failure and collapse, but by doing that, you drive this too close to the lake.
Just shrink up the
Oh crap.
Let's go up even on the road. Well, are we, are we willing to leave it as is? Are we, uh, looking to move it a little? Uh, what's your
If I was giving you anything?
No. Try and
I can't, well, I'm not going to vote on this because I missed out on the septic, but, uh, I wish someone would. I would, I would, if I were to vote, I would vote that, uh, we should follow Ken's, uh, thinking on this.
What was that thinking again?
He threw me on the bus.
You say first.
The board historically has always tried to get an inch, even if there was an inch to gain there.
Yeah.
Um, you'd be gaining a foot on one side, seven feet on the other, you could throw a clause in there if there were other issues to come up that maybe we could change the location without coming back to the board, or if we can't get the seven feet, you guys want them to come back, or?
Or we should give them two numbers, one for each front corner, usually we just give them the one number, not within X number of feet, but we could do two numbers, just I mean, cause he's putting a whole new foundation in, if he was, he'd use the existing foundation. He'd be like, oh, just leave here.
He would be.
He would be here.
Yeah, I know, I know.
The only other thing to consider is, I was gonna reuse my floor. By moving, I have to do a whole new floor too.
Oh, sure.
You're gonna use, Ken, you have a concrete floor?
Yes, it's a concrete floor.
Bob, what I, what I'm thinking is, if, if it, you know, we, yeah, if we can get away from the water more, that, that's great. But this is such a small amount we're talking about. Are we going to, is the environmental impact going to be greater by Thank you, is the environment, could the environmental impact
It's the stay.
Be greater by doing that, rather than just saying, leave it, blessings on you, order the pizza, let's go? Um, you know, because I, I am sure you're gonna be back here with things that are gonna come up, one thing after another. And we want to do the least amount, you know, have the least amount of impact, I mean, I like when you said, I like the old trees, we're gonna leave the trees. You seem to be, um, very in tune with, uh, you know
Concrete changes and all, it's all
And, and that sort of thing.
So am I hearing a motion? Not for pushing or emotion. Mr. Glins.
Okay, I make a motion that we allow the, uh,
Existing structure.
The existing structure to stay
Same location.
In the same location, thank you.
Providing he removes all the patios around it?
Providing he removes all the patios around it.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Comments?
I agree with Joyce, I think it probably is the best thing to leave it right where it is.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the four, oh, upstate? Okay, so four, all abstain?
Yeah, go on the same walk.
Right, okay, so through four. All right, so I guess you're...
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Can I just, what are my next steps as far as to get a permit?
We have probably a couple, three weeks out, but at least you can schedule your contract and come in and just keep calling and say, is it ready?
Is it ready to back from vacation? Sorry.
Right.
Would you say, like, a grading plan or something from the outside? We'll just go over that when we get out there. Did you send in your permit by roll for the DEP?
That's, I needed to know if it was moving or not before I could send in my permit by roll.
Yeah, work on that, that gives us 14 days, so.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, we all have a great night.
All right, thanks.
In all seriousness, are you guys going to be here a while? I will gladly go get... Now that the vote's all done.
That was the worst one.
All right, next is Tributos on Chipmunk Run on Grade East.
I don't think that's his name, but we tried.
Uh, looks like that's what I'm saying when I look at the name.
Mr. Demers is here.
Tramado.
Mr. Tramado, spelled...
Did I spell it? Is M-A-U-T-O, M-A-T-O?
Who knows? It's on Chipmunk Run.
It is where it's from for years.
Yes.
What do we have on this?
Uh, I'll get your name in a minute.
So this one is kind of a compound out there where they have, the owners have a couple of homes, kind of like this at a point.
What lake is this?
Grade East.
Finger circles up?
Yeah. Is this the one that gave you average a couple of years ago?
There hasn't been one of those for a long time, right? Not here.
Did you think that one may have to go way down and then rebuilding it down right next to the lake? With the steep slopes there?
That must have been on Lakeside Drive or something. I just remember similar landscape.
But this one's up on top.
Yeah.
When it was down...
Yeah, I did offer to have all the tape if you wanted to go down and see it up.
Yoli, is it like an escrow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this one here, they want to reuse the two existing house, foundations, demo the two houses, the house and the garage, and rebuild in the same location on the same foundations. We have a letter from a structural engineer stating the foundations are both good shape, so they're removing more than 50% of the value of the two non-conforming structures. I think this one's much easier to deal with because they've got two good foundations. And I just worked with the contractor on a revegetation plan of some kind. They're at almost 50% non-vegetated lot out there, and it's kind of just grown over time, and we just work with them on our revegetation plan. The landscaper was in the other day, and they're relocating some of these trees for some of those there. They're leaving some in place, and from what I heard, if you damage them, you bottom, is what the landscaper was told from the owner. So, um, no trees are being removed otherwise? You don't have to cut anything or anything? I think this was an easy one.
Comments, anybody who saw it?
It's called dibs on buildings. Yeah.
It's very nice looking stuff already, isn't it?
Yeah.
It looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the homeowners are really conscientious on their landscaping.
Was the, was the roof going to get turned?
Yes, the ridge line changes, correction.
That's what you had said, there'd be a slight change.
And connected with the garage, correct?
Correct. There's always going to be a breezeway above the open area below.
So in the stormwater mitigation process, either they'll be doing drip trenches or gutters and drywalls, dry wells?
Even if the foundation's not salvageable, there's really no place...
I think when we started looking at this, was it last year? Maybe, and we started looking at this area here to relocate, which is where the septic's going to go. We weren't gaining a whole lot, but it was making it more conforming, and then we started adding the garage into, and they looked at the foundations, and the foundations are really in good shape, so.
Anybody else, motion if not?
Seems like the biggest thing's the impervious surface.
And it's all crushed down, so it's not like it's sheets off on heavy rains, it does still absorb through, it's just their, um, non-vegetated is at 45% roughly. So we just mitigate some of that a little.
If it's still well under the 20% for the roofs and most well-driven areas, or? It looks like it's pretty close there.
No, they're 45%.
For the impervious?
For the non-vegetated.
How about if they call them at the same time?
Are you including the driveway when you're saying that?
Yeah, non-vegetated.
Yeah.
Which actually hurts them a little because the road is also on their property with the right of way shown and that, so that's included in it, too, and...
That's the neighbor, neighbors' lot.
Um, he owns both of them.
Oh, okay, so we, so we could do something with that.
They're two separate lots, though.
Right, but there's a lot of, yeah, okay.
Exactly, if you look at the 1.6 acres, and if it was all merged, he'd be below the 20%, but this is just happens to be a half acre lot with a quarter acre of non-vegetation.
Yeah. Oh, that seems like the biggest thing.
Yeah, that's the biggest one of that is not going to get the stormwater a little bit better, and once we work with the stormwater plan and the revegetation, then we'll be all set there.
So the crushed down will be lessened and some of that will be vegetated?
Yeah.
Motion?
Yeah, make a motion, nobody accept community recommendation?
Seconds?
Second.
Comments?
What, what is planned to, uh, what kind of vegetation is planned to be used to replace the gravel? Is it a lawn, wooded area, a little buffly, more arboritey? You know, what are we talking about?
He does a lot of the vegetation out there. Most of this is all spruce right here that he's redeveloped there. I think the only thing I would be looking at is in this area here, trying to bring that back, or that area over there. They must have to pick up all the stone in the spring after you, after they plowed all year, so that must all have to come back through, so.
They just come down to the end of the road and, and kind of plow it in, so that, that area doesn't...
I think this is only going to be used in the summer.
I don't wish it.
It's gonna, it's gonna, this will probably turn it into a year-round thing, though.
Yeah. Will they stay at both of them? Year-round, or will they close it?
It's more, yeah, it's more of a guest thing for the summer months, and then the new construction will be there, year-round use.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion out there, and a second it, and the other comments?
I guess I'd just like to hear a little more definite idea of what's going to happen to that gravel area that plans to be revegetated, what it's going to look like, say, in two years, it's going to be, you know, somebody just chucked a couple of rocks there, so you can't plow over there anymore, and the grass comes up through the gravel, or are you going to be pulling the gravel back and laying in loam, or what, you know? I just like to get a little better sense of what, what the plan is. Do you have a plan for that?
We, we don't actually, but we could certainly come up with something and present that. They, they're pretty extensive on their landscaping, you know, trying to get the look that they want, and so I think they'd be amenable to any requirements that were made of that.
Okay, well, maybe we should come up with a number of square feet of gravel that is to be revegetated within 18 months, or within a certain amount of time following construction or something like that.
It'd be prior to the occupancy, probably.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And what, um, about how many square feet is the, that... You, this area right here, about how many square feet is that?
It's 300 maybe in that general area.
Yeah. So 1,500 maybe?
Of the whole thing?
Yeah. 1,600.
Not, not the, not the road.
Don't forget, part of that is road.
2,500.
Okay, so that's much bigger than I was thinking. So what are, what are people thinking would be a reasonable number to work with there?
That little corner that you were talking about is only knocking off 300 plus, right?
Almost just under 400, yeah. So actually, when we went in, we parked sort of...
Yeah, they parked right there.
Right there.
On the blue line, right?
Right there, yeah. What's, what is that space?
It's 880 right there.
How much would you guess we have to get back to?
About how many vehicles you expect to be parked there on the average summer day?
Don't know the answer to that, but I think that's probably why that area was expanded, just because of the visitors.
Right, but you do, yeah, I mean, we do realize you won't be able to walk to them.
The, and the garage is down there.
Yeah, there's a garage.
But that's on the other side.
So you'd have to reduce over 4,000 square feet to get you to 20%. And a lot of it is, would be aesthetics of it, because the...
It is crushed down, it's, it's not a compacted gravel. Or even a lawn, it's still even a little better than a lawn.
Yeah.
Doesn't run off as much. Well, let's, let's ask him to knock, you know, 750 square feet of gravel out of there.
Reduce, reduce the...
From there to there.
Yep.
Does that sound reasonable?
I think that sounds good.
Yeah, if you give him a number, he can turn around and decide what's the best part to get to that number, correct?
Right, right, yeah, we don't need to dictate where.
Because there's gravel area around the backside of the garage, too, and...
And through here.
Yeah, and through there.
Up back, yeah.
There's, there's areas...
The ramp all the way down to the lake.
Yeah, where combined, we could definitely...
Yeah. So there's other areas, too, that you were thinking revegetating anyway, possibly afterward?
Great.
Yeah, good.
All right, we go forward with the motion. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor? All right, thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, look at that, so the conditions need to be revegetated?
The conditions?
Yeah, let's just speak out the conditions again so that Ronnie can write it down.
Do you have the, the, off the blue line, stuff like that?
Yep, this is what we'll put in. So reuse the existing foundations in the existing locations, and reducing the non-vegetated by eight?
800?
Sure.
750?
800, 750, you said 750.
I said 750, yeah. This is 750.
And everybody's good with that?
Or we could say no less than 750.
By no less than, that sounds good, yeah, yeah.
Okay, no less. All right, next.
Thank you very much.
Anybody? A short ride. Do we go to the other one first?
Sure.
We can. How about if we go to Moose Pond Road? I won't even try that last name. And not crack the ear? Moose Pond.
It's a new one, isn't it?
It took you, I'll remember which one.
Yeah, Moose Pond, that's how you...
Yeah, the one in the dark.
Yeah, the one in the dark. With like gray feet.
Right.
Where it's just grabbing the truck and, you know...
But I remember writing this stuff down, is that we're 53 feet off the water, at least on one side, almost, they're both 53 feet, so, for one corner. But I have written down...
So it sounds like this one is applying to place this existing structure on a full foundation, and it sounds like it's not on a full foundation right now.
It's on with chewing gum and...
Stones.
Big things.
Stones. Yeah, it's nice.
Literally, they're placed where the stones are paved and... To prevent this. Do you want to raise the roof, right?
The 30% addition would be going on?
Yeah.
And he's asking to stay in the same location, I take it?
Yeah.
I guess I was up in the air about that. Was he, was he asking to keep it in the same direction, or was he willing to move it?
Uh, there really isn't much room to move it, they prefer it in the same location. The septic tank is right behind it, and if it moved back a couple of feet, you'd have to cut a bunch of trees to bring the power back in, so you'd have to move it back a little further, and there just didn't appear to be a lot of gain on that one, that's for sure.
And the septic, as I wrote down, was done in 2012, so it's a new, corrupted one. This is the one that had a chimney in the front that, when you looked at one side of the chimney, it had moved that much from the side. You know, it was stained to a certain line, and it wasn't stained anymore, so there's something about that chimney that I don't think I'd want my kids anywhere near it, or my kids either. Any pictures of this one?
Uh, my map's online, kind of died, so bring it back in while you do shadow puppets while we... Keep the crowd entertained.
Well, you must have regular pictures that we can take a peek at.
Right. And I picked it from last New Year's Eve, something. Entertains us with...
Christmas tree.
There's a note, Ken, here on, on the Joyce's notes that says, need to see the plans. They don't, they have not come to you yet with, with plans, is that the...
As far as your second floor and stuff like that, or expansion?
I don't know, just look at the number three, it just says, need, need to see the plans.
I've got some rough ones, but nothing to write a permit for now.
All right.
It, it really did look like they were trying to fix it up. You could see where it was newly painted and maybe even part of it was suddenly sided, newly sided as well. And, you know, you could see the difference.
Did it just change owners?
So it's heavily vegetated, that's the site there?
No, no. Are they new owners, Ken?
Yeah.
Some make them stretch out to sell for its fee.
And so is, yeah.
There's your chimney.
There's your chimneys. You don't see the line, it's on the right side.
Just a while?
Yeah.
It does look like some trees would have to be trimmed back.
Yeah, it's pretty bad just to get the equipment in there and do the actual work, so we probably have to meet a little ground.
Some of the trees in the chimney, yeah.
You're looking, this is at the same house, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the back side.
Is it date colors?
No, it's before, the color is... No, it's before the color is, is now.
That's the old.
That's the old color.
Yeah, it was kind of a.
Oh, it's just quite close.
Greenish, greenish color. Yeah, green. Only my heart of it is greenish.
It actually looks like the old fashioned greenish best, just shades.
So what, what's your recommendation, Ken, on this one?
I'd say it's in the best location, where the septic tank is, they have to relocate the tank, move it back. Um, it's beyond that five-year window that we put in to make sure people specifically didn't do that.
They did go across the right away, Ken, though.
Well, they're, they got, the fifty, and the, the right of way is fuzzy there too, because it just ends at the back, but um, at the most, you'd have a couple of feet before you encroached on that right of way. It's another angle issue.
I think that's science at that point.
That's pretty close here. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Yep, so they had it on that.
Is the corner there, the, the fifty-three feet to that corner from the corner of property, the same corner of ours? Right, yeah.
Are you talking to the water, or?
Yeah, but go to the, I guess, what's that?
The closest corner he wants to move.
The closest corner.
Oh, totally, it'll go to the other side. It's the same.
It's a shoreline shape.
This site map's telling me fifty-three feet.
And the water, we don't want.
Yeah. So normally, in a situation like this, we'd put some benchmarks in, so we'd drive some pins in, triangulate them off some trees over there, so we know they don't get relocated when we're not there, and then we just relocate, um, remeasure, so that it's in the same spot. Otherwise, when it's a new process, or it's been relocated, and you're looking for a specific number, then we require a certified plot plan from a surveyor. They would go out and do the measurements, and we'd make sure it meets the numbers that you guys have requested.
What do you think?
Just an observation here, can you just measure that? You measured it as an extension of the, um, if you're looking at this as a map, the north, excuse me, the south wall, but you would measure it to the closest, um.
Point?
Point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and if.
No.
It makes it the one that's closer.
You want an extension of the southern building edge, which is the shortest point to the wall. No.
You think this side's closer?
No. Swing that up, yeah.
No, yeah, no, exactly, yeah. And, and if it comes in, where they had a little inlet or something, we'd be coming off of that, so it's, it's closest point.
We're down to forty-three somewhere around there.
And this is probably inaccurate, I would be going with their site plan and work with that prior to.
Sure.
Which they're telling me was the fifty-three.
This one's gonna be, they're gonna continue to use what's there, and then just basically go up the thirty percent, go up to a second floor or loft?
Yeah, it would just be a small dormer on the one side, you would, thirty percent of that.
Yeah.
They're going to be able to double their space with the foundation, which doesn't count, but the second floor would be limited to thirty percent of.
Is it four by thirty-six?
Yeah, so, well, eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, bring in another forty-eight. I don't remember seeing that there. So nine hundred square, three hundred square feet, it's not very big.
So they're gonna keep the existing structure and jack it up to a foundation underneath it?
Which makes a difference sometimes, because to pick it up and relocate it through a bunch of trees versus pour a foundation back there, you didn't touch the trees. So sometimes, like the first gentleman, when they get into it, they realize it's rotten junk, and they want to just rip it down, they were saving it. At that time, they're gonna come back and talk to you, because the board may have a different opinion that now, now it's not uh, jacking up and putting it back down, now you're throwing it in the dumpster and stopping all over.
That, that little piece off to the right must have been those, um, whatever the.
Where the pillars were and stuff.
And we found the two pillars down where the.
Put it up in this area here, a little bit for a.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
But you're right, there was nothing there.
No.
No.
But you can see all the loss and stuff on that, so. Um, and what we normally do, this is a current assessment card, we'll go back to the nineteen eighty-nine assessment card, and if that's not there, we'll look for a permit forward, if that's not, if there was no permit for it, then it was illegally added, you don't get the square feet, and it has to be reduced, or you use square footage there.
But at thirty percent of that forty-eight, it's not gonna get them a whole lot more.
No, it isn't.
You know, talking, it should make some.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty square feet is what she's calculated. Two hundred and seventy-six square feet. She was really good when she came in, she had the numbers right on, and she was.
On a graph paper.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, what did everybody think? Anyone handle this one? Any motion anywhere?
I'm being a mistake, I'm gonna come.
Mostly some good recommendations, if you get what I mean.
Second?
Second.
Okay, comments? And again, everything goes the same with the shoreline mitigation and stuff and all that, that just gets routinely stuck in there as we have done in the past. Any other things that we want to add?
Only one on the septic.
Yep. Do we need to be writing in anything to do with that little addition that was off there, or is that just something that you?
No, we don't care that.
Okay. All right, all in favor? All right, looks like it's good. All right, now are we going backwards?
Yeah, thank you.
Now we're going to, uh, West Shore Drive? Okay, this is the one that's got the house posted to water, and then it's got that, uh, which, I don't know what you call it, that's out in the back, uh, behind it. I don't know what it is, a lot of junk in it. Yeah, yes, it's a shed. And then it also has a third building out by the road, a small building out by the road. I remember it being a block foundation up there. Anybody want to throw anything in there, uh, if you saw it?
So the existing building, the existing camp, the site here is fourteen feet to the water, this side here was. No one went, oh, this is painted. Yeah, fourteen feet I had on this corner here, this corner here was twenty-one.
Right.
So what we did on this one here is we took this square, relocated it into this area here, uh, which came out to be thirty-three feet. We were coming twenty-six feet from here, but talking with them, they're gonna just keep sliding it down that way, we actually came up with fifty-six feet from that inlet. Can you see that? So there's the existing camp.
Yeah.
The new one's behind it, thirty-three feet, thirty-three feet, and then that, that, by sliding it further towards the property of other, ended up getting fifty-six from this inlet area.
And this is his drawing?
This is his drawing.
So he's already been agreed to take that shed out of there?
He wants to take it out.
Yeah, he's gonna, so we're gonna relocate this one and that one into one, and put it right into there.
I didn't realize there was a third structure.
That's up by the street.
It's up by the street.
Correct. So the septic, um, tank goes into this area here, and makes back, and they're gonna pump it up to the septic field up here.
And, and so the net gain back from the water, um, uh.
The worst spot was fourteen to thirty-three.
All right, so that's nineteen feet.
The better, sorry, I guess we were at the double negative on that one, twenty-one to thirty-three.
Okay, so that's twelve.
And that's eaves overhangs and everything, so if you had two-foot eaves, then you'd be moving it back two more feet.
And, and there's no way we can push it further back into the hill?
Well, I looked at, as we discussed there, it would be, um, I think this was sixteen feet wide, and we put the, we relocated the existing structure, the sixteen-foot structure, and just into the toe a little bit, and not stuffing the sixteen-foot structure into the bank, which seemed reasonable. That allows them, if they wanted to, to dig into the bank and, and build any additional sized structure. Of course, they're not gonna build sixteen feet, and when they get into that bank, um, they'd be dealing with engineered foundation walls and things like that, because of the steepness of that bank, it's so steep.
And what you're talking about right there is the shed that they're gonna actually put back in it, right?
No, the whole house. When they, if, if they were to do their addition.
Yeah, the septic.
They're incorporating that into the building.
Into the, into the thirty percent.
Yeah.
Gain, okay, gotcha. I thought you were saying earlier that there was going to be a shed of some sort built up, um, to the house.
No, no, the house and the shed gets incorporated, so we get rid of the two structures into one.
Yep.
The shed, we did a best possible location on this. Maybe fifteen years ago, and it was, um, closer into here, uh, and they stuffed that into the hill the best they could on that one.
So we already did a thirty percent expansion on the shed?
Yeah.
And they can still roll it into the house?
They can roll it in, but they don't get the shed plus the.
Okay, so you're.
They use it all. So it would be this existing square footage, so.
How about their impervious?
They've got, they're gonna have to work on a stormwater management, the water, as it comes down the driveway here, it wants to kind of roll, but it comes right down into this area here, they've got berms up and around, this is all heavily revegetated in this area. Um, and it's got a berm, a nice berm on this side here, this is gonna end up being their rain garden. And then when the house comes in, the standard drip line trenches and things like that, we'll work with the Acton Shapley Youth Conservation, more than likely, they're the easiest ones to do the designs.
Mm-hmm, but on the other side, if I remember right, there were a number of trees that were dead.
There were, in this area, there was a couple of dead, um, there are some trees that they had to replant, uh, that had died, those would all have to be replanted under a different issue we were working with, but this whole area here would be all revegetated with grasses. There were two or three trees back here, that I would want to cut anyways, even if I wasn't replacing it, just because of the, um, the roots are exposed from when they did this project here, and those would be replanted. This photo is prior to the revegetation that was done out there. There is some in there, but there's a lot more now, and these rock areas have been covered with mulch. So basically, the newer house would be all with all this rock is. The back side of it would be.
And that slope is, as you've said, in, in process of being revegetated now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were there trees on that slope?
Yeah.
Not, not, I mean.
Oh, on one point.
I'm talking before, like, trees that were revegetated.
Right, this whole area had like a gravel face to it, so this area was revege, this area was vegetated, and then it just went to a gravel face, dropped right off on that, so, um, two things kind of happened there, is they didn't need to revegetate that area, because it wasn't before, and their intention was to move this house into that area, so the DEP allowed them not to heavily revegetate in an area where um, the possibility was digging it all back up in a short amount of time, but on the other hand, it wasn't vegetated before in that area. But this area here is received, um, they replanted thirty-six trees out there, I believe the number was.
So, so now, where the new plan is, and the back edge of the new plan, how far away are we from the beginning of the incline? Going up the hill?
The new structure?
Yes.
Would be set into that back end. Three feet.
Turn into it.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet.
So it's twelve feet into the bank? Okay.
They have a daylight basement, kind of, yeah?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would probably create how high of a foundation?
On the back wall?
Correct.
They're trying to hope it's eight feet, but I think they're looking at ten anyways.
Keep your wood out of the west.
On the back side, yeah.
Yeah, lift it up a little bit more, you're sitting around. Well, it looks to me like the biggest thing with the revegetation, but like you were saying, they're already in process on that.
Yep.
And like you said, one of the earlier ones, until that's all done, there's no.
It's a much bigger leverage, because at that point, then they have three, four, five hundred thousand dollars, and they need a CO, it's great when they have bank money, because they won't get the bank money without it, but if you don't have the CO and the permit expires, eventually you're going to need one. Um, and once the permit expires, and it's a dollar a day, and we have people, you know, six, seven, eight, ten years, and they need one.
All right, any other questions or comments? And or motion?
Any issue with the boat launch situation?
Um.
Is that?
That was kind of my thing.
Is this the boat launch?
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the big thing is gonna be the stormwater mitigation, that it's all brought over into this rain garden area, and the state's looking at a constant form of mulch here that needs to be maintained.
And they were, they came to agreement, I guess, of some kind, because they found pictures or saw pictures, right, that you're.
Correct, there was some existing ones.
Something there.
They're down on West Shore Drive?
Yeah.
So they're not very far from the public boat launch, are they?
Too far.
Yeah, I mean, West Shore Drive, they're right on the.
Yeah, you come through the dock right there.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, I don't know, yeah, I mean, that seems tempting to ask them to, when they replant those trees and put some down there.
Where?
Where the boat launches, I mean, if they're, two, two doors down, they get to the public boat launch.
Uh, it's referred to as, it's more of a beach area.
Well, we could ask them to revegetate it, can we, even if they still used it in the same fashion, if it was vegetated instead of sand?
But I like it sand.
It's a little beach.
Well.
It's more, uh, stop right, is what it is.
It's not, it's definitely not a sandy beach, it's, uh.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think that's a sandy beach, even though it looks like it in that.
In that picture, it does, but.
Well, it doesn't look vegetated.
It's not at all. But, uh.
I mean, what, what?
So I would definitely want, I wouldn't see that vegetated, even if they still use it as a boat launch or whatever it is, it should be vegetated.
Something needs to be there, because that was my concern.
Is that what it looks like?
Yeah.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Oh, yeah. That's right, the top of the hill.
That's the one on the top.
You know, you got the chairs.
That's what it looked like before.
So that's why we didn't look at revegetating this area.
You got another shot of that, uh?
The one.
Beach there.
That's the only one I had. Otherwise, the outcome would have been different.
And so back.
They actually had some photos that showed the other side, maybe we could specifically look at different rocks and tell that.
Oh, yeah.
It was, something was there, so the attorney general didn't want to, didn't see it as a, a fight to pick.
It looks like, looks to the boat launches to the left of the photo, like.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
All right, we good?
The other one's some vegetation.
Well, I want to.
You know, I agree with you.
I mean, I'm, you know.
See, my, my concern was when we were there, the water comes down the driveway, yeah, they're gonna have that rain garden, whatever, there, but.
It'll still, it'll still go around.
Yeah, because that, that is a place that puddles quite a bit. You know, on West Shore, I mean, you know, and if it's in the road, it's gonna come down and.
Yeah, we just got quite five inches.
You know, something like that.
We also have the wave action on it too, the water coming the other way too.
There's not that much there, but, you know.
There's no plans, it's moving.
But, yeah, something better than the gravel that's there now.
So you're saying, Ken, that the Attorney General says that it's okay to keep that in place?
He didn't see it as a violation that they were going to deal with.
Okay. That being said, do we have the right to change it?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the last guy.
You can ask for it.
Yeah.
But I, if push came to shove, I don't think realistically you're relocating the house and revegetating where the structure was.
Maybe we should get a, um, an actual, you know, percentage of impervious on the wall. Exist, because the picture looks empty. Because that would give us something to work with.
This would have been a huge packet and a ding dong?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I've gone to here. Can you get it in there?
They've had a few.
Fifteen point six seven is the unvegetated.
So what would you like to see in there, Ken?
Um, yeah, maybe have the, you know, stump rations or erosion control and all supplied to the, to the, that area.
Beach area?
Yeah, whatever they call it. And then something in there where, you know, vegetation will be allowed to grow in that area. Vegetation will not be removed, you know? Because you know they go down there and do something, walk up and down, or something that causes the vegetation to not grow. Whatever, you know, sitting on the beach, whatever it is, but, something that just states that vegetation shouldn't be allowed to grow there. Or it should be encouraged to grow, or. I mean, I'd go as far as asking to put a couple of the trees that they're taking down the back up there, but if that's not.
Well, you sound as a boat ramp, that's, that's what they're doing.
Well, they could put it on the side. Or they could go two houses down to the public boat launch.
Except you can't on the public boat launch.
That's a small bridge.
You know, you can get a, like, small tin can through there, but you're not going to get a good-sized boat, especially this time of year when the water's down.
That's what the people like, so they don't pay boats.
I'm not arguing that part.
I think they'll want to.
They, I doubt they want to.
They're okay, but maybe jet skis. Well, I don't know.
Well, I think, like you said, trees, trees. I like that idea, actually.
Pretty hard to oversee it.
Right.
I mean, one thing to say, it's pretty hard to oversee it.
Well, we could have a note in there that YCC will, um, will, you know, help to revegetate each area within reason or something like, or within, um, you know, to still allow the owner to launch a boat, but to have vegetation growing on the shoreline.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, but that seems to me that's realistic. I mean, you're not asking them to change the use, you're just asking them to try and get something that is going to help to keep the water running through it.
If they increase that water, uh, rainwater garden to come right up to that line, might do something.
Install a corrosion control mulch up to six feet away from the lake.
Yeah, because you can't go right to the lake anyway.
Mulch that whole thing and just pull back about six feet. Yeah, naturally, there was a berm here, it's just been beat, beat up pretty much.
But up and down over it, so they're going to reinstate the berm.
Yeah.
But, uh, they're gonna put the erosion control mulch down.
So the main, most of the main runoff I see coming is down the driveway. And you got to capture it before it makes that turn or in this general area and bring that all into this rain garden area here. So then your other runoff's going to be off of the house, which is now, you know, fifty-six feet from there versus what it is now. And the drip line trenches or the government drywells will take care of that. And with this area revegetated, I think you've, you've cleaned up a lot of the stormwater. They had, um, a couple of the rubber raises proposed for this area here.
How about the new parking area, say if the house is approximately where the stone wall is?
Yeah.
Where would they be parking?
It'd be just, all you have is this little bit of area right here and this area here.
So we could ask them to revegetate fully in front of the new camp?
This whole area is revegetated with the.
And just, it's saying the camp was right here, right? So every, right here approximately, the.
So. Actually, stats parallel with this one. They show it parallel with that camp that it is right behind it.
Yeah, okay, so it's not, it doesn't come, yeah. So it's more over here.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And that's by removing this one, originally with this one stayed, they didn't have the room to move it, but now that being removed.
Yeah. So the whole area in front of the new.
There's a fence in the structure.
Structure will be revegetated.
Yeah, and I think you're actually coming way back into this area yet too.
And we're good with that, uh, that fence that's there?
This one here?
Can I see for sure that it's inside the property line?
Yeah, these are just tax maps overlaid on Google Earth. So it looks like that one is and you can't see this one on media.
We're not too concerned about, you know, I know it's mulched all the way down that hill toward that beach or boat launch. Coming down that hill, the water, stormwater mitigation there.
I think the house is actually going to retain anything coming down this area. And then the swales on the backside of the house would be going this way.
Okay.
So, I mean, to keep the pressure off of this area.
Yeah.
And then come back into another rain garden detention depression right in this area here. So what really helps this, I mean, we get rid of this, that's great. But by getting rid of this, this is allowing this whole structure to slide this way. Otherwise, we were twenty-one feet or so from here, twenty-six feet, you know, we were twenty-six feet from this area where we had it originally proposed. And then when they wanted to get rid of this, it just slid this whole thing over. And turn that to fifty-six. Fifty-six. But that, that toe of the slope is basically half, half into the house.
And so that thirty percent increase on this one, you may have said before, I may have missed it, is a extension up?
Correct. Because you'll have a full foundation underneath. I think actually this may be a wash, if not, there'll still be a lot of thirty percent left over.
And they're not going to use this little bit of sand?
They're bringing this in, the foundation doesn't count against them. So they have this, they're shrinking the length down a little bit. They'll probably use all their volume, that's for sure.
Well, the movie we get is big change in off the water.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, that's a, that's a distinct plus.
Yeah, it's going to be a whole different site with the house stuffed into the banking. Uh, this all revegetated to absorb it. This changes, that brings it right back in. And it still leaves a great buffer between these neighbors. And not a lot you can do into here.
How about the outside, the shower?
That goes. We'll see it right there.
Yeah, not, and on this side, it really is a garage implying the.
This one up here?
Property to there.
Oh, the one before.
Yeah, the house is set back further. Yeah, that's just a garage store.
And I should have just sold serenades years and years ago. All right, we have motion.
Fine, we'll leave it up to you.
Second? Comments?
I guess we should just get in a little more. That house would be relocated no more than.
Thirty-three feet. And that's what Brenda turns into the, the verbiage on the permits anyways. We work off the site plan, no closer than thirty-three, with fifty-six off of it. We're vegetating that beach area up to six feet away from the high water.
Reinstate the berm.
Reinstate the berm on that, and we'll have the stormwater mitigation.
The rain garden that's coming down.
Rain garden.
Brought, made more extensive.
Going closer to the boat ramp slash beach.
We good? What are you thinking?
I'm good.
I don't know if you're thinking or.
You see smoke?
All right, all is figured out of the motion. All opposed? Good, okay. Next.
What?
Do you have anything?
I just have a quick note from, uh, the town forest that would appreciate if he could have a, uh, a site visit. That's what we were calling him, just to, I don't know, whatever it's called.
A site visit?
A site visit to illustrate to the board the state, uh, timber harvesting practices up close and personal. Show some examples that are on the Goddard Road of, uh, that would illustrate very clearly to us what we are, um, doing when we're abiding by state standards versus, um, Acton's existing, uh, timber harvesting standards.
Do we have a, this would, this would be moving toward, uh, having the, the, an informed vote by the planning board on, on the acceptance of being in accordance with state plans, i.e., you know, gaining the ability to utilize the state's expertise to help us with issues of enforcement if need be. And he was, he was hoping to have some information to us in a, um, illustration form with a little verbiage, uh, before the date of the site visit. And we were, as we were talking today, it was either, uh, nine fourteen, nine fourteen, which is the odd Thursday coming up next week, or nine twenty-one, he was hoping that he might have some room to.
I don't think we'd have enough time to post anything for the fourteen. The twenty-first would be before our meeting, which I don't know if we'd have enough time. I was thinking the twenty-eighth, which would be the meeting after our next meet, or the, the Thursday after our next meeting.
Okay. Now, the twenty-first, the public hearing is tough, the idea of being out there in the woods and then scrambling back here and all of a sudden, depending on whether there's a number of people here or not.
And it's darker and darker.
You got to get your head together a little bit if all of a sudden you look out and see ten people out there who are going to be, you know, speaking to us.
And you, the office is going on vacation sometimes, is that right?
The office, the office.
Well, can you, can you folks confer with him?
Yep, I will.
Okay, appreciate that. He, he was, I did ask him, as Brenda suggested earlier, would there be an advantage in going once the leaves are down, and he said it wouldn't make much of a difference. I don't understand why, but he wasn't, that wasn't a determining factor in his thinking.
Sunset now, seven oh six.
So what time would you do it on the twenty-eighth?
I suggested six.
Six o'clock, you're town hall.
You? That's, that's close.
Three reasons.
Takes ten minutes to get to Goddard Road.
I'm going on the twenty-eighth. Yeah, we're on the twenty-eighth. Yeah.
We'll probably have to get a notice on that, because I don't know.
Well, we can fine tune everything at the next meeting. But it's not going to happen before the next meeting.
And if we posted that there was a meeting that and it didn't happen, who cares? But if we didn't post it and we did, somebody could get out.
Yeah.
What is the ruling on public notice for a site visit?
For a site visit?
Yeah.
Additional meeting?
Yeah, ten, additional meeting, ten days.
So if you were to put it in there now, as in our minds, potentially the twenty-eighth, and it didn't happen? Okay, so what?
Because you're meeting here, so if anybody wanted to link up with you, you would just tell them that it didn't happen instead of on sight.
And do we have, we have a lot picked out?
Yeah, he said it's, it's done, he's locked shows very clearly the change that would be occurring with the acceptance of, of state standards. And, and then what, what would, what would it look like abiding by the definition of IP as being smaller than ten years by, by the state, by the town ordinance?
And then we'll set for sure, we should, we should know for sure if it's going to happen then by our next meeting. All right, perfect. Anybody else with anything? Then I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn?
Upcoming conditional uses that I've been talking to individuals with, it looks like possibly four major subdivisions. Automotive repair facility. And I've got one person talking about an elderly housing complex unit.
And we're talking now over the next two years?
Uh, they're all excited.
Are you talking ones?
Major or minor subdivisions?
Majors. One was on Goose Pond Road and, um, they were well receptive to the connotation subdivisions. We used to call clusters. One that I didn't count was actually on one of the lots that we just subdivided in Burner Towels in front of the. They were not very excited about the cluster subdivision. I guess there's a lot of ledge out there, so to group them all into one area, it's going to be hard for the septic, so their thinking was that. I explained, you got to design both and then the board will use common sense from there.
Where else are you talking?
There's a couple that are in theories, H Roads, we do have a campground being discussed on H Road as well. So there's a few others out there too, so.
And we got a public hearing next time for the.
Yes, we do.
I want to ask them about all that room, Ken, just, just so you had it in your head. Like that whole parking area, hundred ten cars, they're going to put gravel, they're going to dig up all that room. We can ask them to keep it on site, can't we?
As long as they had a use for it on site.
Like they're spreading it on their hay field or whatever it was.
Yeah, if they needed additional. The other thing I was thinking with that is driveway going in, we're not too concerned. But if it becomes a road or something like that, they would be looking for designs and stuff like that.
We're taking, talking about the board?
Yeah.
Yes. I've had a concern rattling around in my head about that area, whatever the hell it is, hydraulic fluid or oil. They ought to, um, they ought to have it removed by the end of town. I don't know if that will happen, but. I don't know if that will happen, but I, I think it would be a shame to leave that there.
Dig it up and bring it to his house. Put it in garbage bags.
The DEP would make it just, you know, they can dispose of it. They have to burn this oil, this one.
Is that something the Acton transfer station takes, like if you dug up so contained soil?
No, no, that'd be the DEP. And...
But you can take waste oil to the dump.
Right, but this isn't dirt.
Has to be clean, any waste oil.
Yeah.
Where is that?
It was a small area where...
Yeah, but I didn't understand.
There was like kind of this darker area.
Looked like where the guy with the skid had changed his engine. And that's exactly, I mean...
Probably just a couple hydraulics as well.
Probably not.
It was a, you know, it was a fair puddle, so to speak.
Is this my dog leash?
I didn't want that. I didn't want to trip on it either.
Yeah.
And you have a...
We have to, right? Do we already have motion, adjourn?
We have it.
Okay, motion, adjourn.
Second?
That was quick.
All in favor?
Aye.